Okay, we'll call to order this February the 27th, 2019 meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call, Janet.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
You'd all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Kim Wilcox of the North Baptist Church.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We join you in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day, and Father, we thank you as the people in Franklin County for the leadership that you provided for each one of us. And Father, we pray as we come this morning, we know that we have human frailty, and Father, we don't always make decisions that we need to, and so we do ask for your guidance. Father, these commissioners this morning make a lot of difference within our county, and so Father, we ask that you give them just divine understanding this morning to each one of the instances that come up, the circumstances, and Father, that you would just bless them for their obedience and striving to make Franklin County a better place for each one of us. And so, Father, we just ask for your guidance and direction during this meeting this morning. Father, we thank you for all that you do for us, and Father, we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Derek, you have anything on correspondence and organizational business?
Uh, nope. No, I don't.
All right. No one signed up for public comment? Takes us to the consent agenda. Okay. We have no claim vouchers or tax change orders today, so items that need considered and approved will be the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for February the 20th and Franklin County Commission study session minutes for February the 19th. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Takes us to items of business. The first item of business will be consider approving solicitation of chemical bids for 2019. Peggy?
Good morning. As you know, it's that time of year again where we need to start putting out bids for chemical purchases for this year. In your packets, I had attached a list of the vendors, which I do need to add one more vendor to that that came in on Monday that requested a packet. Also, there's a bid form that was in that packet, and then, oh, the solicitation of chemical bids, the letter. Our quantities went up just a little bit on the bids, which we're not obligated to those in any way, but we would like to bid these amounts according to what we sold last year and what we still had in inventory. So, I am looking for approval to go ahead and put these packets together and get them in the mail today or tomorrow, if possible.
I just lost my agenda for some reason.
Be happy to make a motion to allow soliciting bids for purchase of chemicals for the noxious weed department.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, consider approving the solicitation of bids for the 2019 painted pavement marking project.
Okay, Commissioners, this is the first step in going out for bids for the chip seal project. The painted pavement marking is part of that project. It's a separate group of contractors that we send this out to at the same time. I've got a group of six contractors that we'll be sending this to. We'll look for others as we get into this, but I'm asking you to consider letting us solicit the bids.
Motion to approve to allow soliciting bids for the 2019 paint project on the hard surface road.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Item number three, also will be David. Consider approving solicitation of bids for the 2019 chip and seal project.
Okay, so we've identified just under 50 miles of hard surface road that we will be chip sealing this year, and I've got a group of nine contractors that we'll be contacting to solicit bids from, and I would ask for your approval to do so.
You said nine?
Nine.
Do you have any idea where we were at last year with that? That seems like a lot more than we've had in the past.
It's basically the same list. It's just a matter of how many of those respond to us. I think last year, there were only, out of that, out of that group, I think there were only two or three that responded.
Is it possible to get a copy of that list?
From last year?
The list that you're going to send out?
Um, yes.
I'd like to have.
Okay.
We pulled Nebraska Road off of the...
We did.
Let's, I guess, I think we kind of owe it to them to pull them out of the rotation to...
We feel like the amount of work necessary on that, if we just, if we just put chip seal on it, it's, it's not going to solve the problem. It's a bigger project than that. And so, I've spoken with some of, one of the landowners in the area and told them about what we plan to do. So, as soon as the weather breaks and we move from taking care of these issues, we'll get into a more of a proactive role and really analyze that area to see if, if there are drainage improvements that need to be made, and we will look at that. It could be a total reconstruct. It, I think the problems are, appear to be that severe. And so, we don't want to spend dollars trying to limp it along for a little while longer because that, that, that dismasks the problems that, that are there. And quite frankly, I think it's a, it's not a good use of county funds to do that.
How long stretch is that due?
I don't think it's very long. I think maybe a mile to a mile and a half total, depending on how much you include in that area. But it's not a, it's not a very long stretch. It's just, it's in a low area. There's, there are significant drainage issues, and there's issues with the, oh, the finished floors on some of the residences in the area are fairly low, so you have to, that has to be considered whenever you're looking at drainage issues. Any, if we raise the road and do sort, those sorts of things, it could negatively impact the neighborhood. So, all of that has to be considered.
How many residences are we looking at? Do you have any idea?
I'm not sure of the number.
If we do have to do total rebuild, would we be able to do in-house?
We think we might be able to. I hesitate to confirm that until we really get out and analyze it in depth, but we will, that would be our first, our first choice.
Nice to know.
Yeah.
Want to be able to give somewhat of an answer, make sure...
Yeah.
I don't feel like they're on the back burner or...
No, they're, they're, yeah, they're definitely not. They're, it's just an area that deserves more attention than just putting chip seal on top.
I have also, getting back to the, the potential vendors for these projects, both the painted pavement project as well as the chip seal, given that David is new in his position and there's been something of a changing of the guard, I've encouraged him to reach out personally to each vendor and invite them to bid, just in hopes that maybe we can drum up more interest or build that relationship. And obviously, competition is good, so I would anticipate him doing that in pretty short order. But hopefully, we get, I feel like last year on the painted pavement, I feel like we just got, maybe there were two and one of them was outrageous, but I know we weren't happy with the job that was done initially. And I think they came back and made it right, but hopefully we can, we can drum up some interest.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll look for a motion to approve solicitation of bids for the 2019 chip and seal project.
Make a motion for the solicitation of bids for the 2019 chip seal project?
Have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Next item will also be David. Consider for approval, approving the plans for the US-59 Highway and Kingman Road intersection project associated with Proximity Park and authorizing the solicitation of bids.
Okay. This particular project is, it is the next in line project. You, we're under construction on the Kingman Road and Montana Road and the bridge. Those projects are moving along. I'll give you an update on those here shortly. But this project is the initial phase of this intersection project, based on a traffic study that was prepared by Bartlett West some time ago. With the traffic counts, it warranted some improvements, but not a full build-out of the intersection and, and that stretch of road. So, what this project entails, we will be constructing the full intersection, but we will only be striping the parts that we plan to use today. And so, down the road, whenever the traffic counts increase and we come back ultimately with a traffic light, we won't have to construct additional pavement. We'll just have to re-stripe it and build the additional lanes into it. So, that intersection hopefully will only be under construction one time. And so, what we will have, coming northbound into the intersection, you'll have a through ra, through lane, you'll have a right turn lane onto Kingman Road going east, and you'll have a left turn lane onto Kingman going west. And then, coming southbound, you'll basically have the same thing. You'll have a left turn lane going on to Kingman eastbound, a right turn lane going on to Kingman westbound, plus a through lane as well. So, that should, it won't be signalized, but it should increase the safety of that intersection by, you know, tenfold. Should be a significant improvement. And then, it will tie into the new Kingman Road that we've, we've built. And so, this, this project has, in the bonding that has already been done by the county, this project is already figured into that, if I remember correctly. This is also, KDOT came across with 1.7 million to assist with the project, and so, we are ready to go to bid on that. KDOT is in the final stages of approving the plans. We should have final approval from them within the next week or so. We're just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is right now. Our hope is to advertise this mid-March, get a bid mid-April, and go to construction mid to late May, and hopefully be done by Thanksgiving roughly.
We need two motions on this one for the plans.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, just a second. And one for the solicitation, or we do it all in one motion?
You can do it all in one motion, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
I had a question about the lighting at that intersection, because I know I've had people that have complained about the lighting at Rock Creek and 59, at the 35 Highway and 59, when you get off of there, there's not a lot. And then, going into Love's, you know, there's just not sufficient lighting. And, but anyway, I just wondered about, is that included? You know, like, big...
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I...
I think the more traffic we get, the better, you know, it is to let, I mean, if you're following a truck going into Love's, they don't, they can't find that.
I can find out the answer for you on this particular project. I can't speak to the others. Those are within KDOT right-of-way, and so, they are responsible for those types of things. But I will definitely check into the Proximity Park intersection project that we're talking about and let you know if there's any lighting associated with that.
But then conduit relocating utilities to accommodate the signal option?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, when we get to that point, when we are signalizing that intersection, the, that, you know, the guts of that will be there, which will help facilitate the project. And, and the utility companies are, the water districts are out of the way. AT&amp;T and KC P&L are working now or getting ready to start moving their utilities.
Clarification, David, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if citizens were concerned about the lighting at those intersections, I mean, certainly reaching out to you would be fine.
Certainly.
Ultimately, that's, that's KDOT right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
That would be entirely their discretion.
Yes, sir.
Whether or not they put lights in there.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
I mean, at best, you could be a conduit for them, and you could reach out to KDOT, but they're, they're not gonna, I mean...
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And then, on the, the intersection, if I recall, PEC designed it, and there were five phases.
Mm-hmm.
And KDOT funded us through Phase Two.
That is correct.
1.7 million would have covered us through that second phase. And is that what these design plans are?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, okay. So, in theory, and we don't know what the bids are going to say, but if the engineer's estimate is ballpark, we should have KDOT funds. That would cover this project.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the, the design and the construction admin and those types of things, those are already, those fees are already covered in the contract that you signed with Bartlett West to handle Kingman Road and Montana Road. So, that, those fees are already captured.
So, even though KDOT would cover up to Phase Two, but this is only Phase One?
No, this is...
One and two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's how it was there. Okay.
It, you know, maybe at a study session or something, we can kind of walk through what the future plans are at some date, if, if you would like.
No, I just was reading this. It looked like it was only Phase One, so I just want clarification.
Any more questions on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the plans for the US-59 Highway and Kingman Road intersection and authorize the solicitation of bids.
I would make that motion.
Motion in a second, Jen.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Item number five, consider approval, solicitation of bids for trash services for all the Franklin County facilities.
Derek? You'll recall here, a couple weeks ago, we had a discussion about our increasing costs associated with the trash pickup, and that prompted us to recommend soliciting bids for that service. And that's what you have in front of you today. I had Brandon, our maintenance director, create a revised pickup schedule, so what you have in front of you is actually slightly modified. And he's here to talk about that and answer any questions that you have. I, I will tell you, interestingly enough, we have been billed from our current vendor since then, and the bill went way down. So, I don't know, at this point, it's unclear to me what, you know, what rate we're being charged, but in any event, this will give all interested parties the opportunity to bid on the service and, and will allow us to ascertain what the lowest and best bid is. So, if you have questions for Brandon, he's here. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to allow us to solicit bids for the service.
I just know when they first took over the, the company, I was at one of the small-town meetings, and they came out, introduced themselves, and that they would be taken over. And I can still remember at that meeting, they advised them there would not be any changes in the rate. It'd just be a change in name and maybe some different trucks and so forth. And they told them several times, the rate will stay the same. There's no changes coming there. And I don't know whether these changes have been passed on to the smaller towns or not, but they did advise them when they took it over that there wasn't any change, rate changes that would be coming, but that might not have been for us.
I know Princeton was addressing some of those issues at their meeting.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Would that, anybody have anything else on this? If not, we'll look for approval, solicitation of bids for trash services for all the Franklin County facilities.
Make a motion to do so.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay. Takes us to staff reports. Derek, can you have your paper back?
Uh, no, that's all right. We've talked a little bit, want to talk a little bit more about our tax sale. So, anytime you do a tax sale, or it seems like every time we do one, there are always a couple of properties that, for whatever reason, we have trouble getting service on. And, and having trouble getting served and why they're on the tax sale, I mean, those two are typically correlated. And so, we have a couple of properties that were on this year's tax sale where we couldn't get service on a mortgage company that was attached to the deed because the mortgage company no longer exists. You can't serve an entity that doesn't exist. That's not the, you know, that's not our lawyer's fault. That's, that's really not, not the purchaser's fault. That's not anybody's fault. The problem we have here, though, is title companies are reluctant to grant title insurance on those properties because technically, we couldn't get service. And so, we've got a property that is essentially useless. And so, the question is, what do we do with that? In talking with the title company, one of the things that they have, have said is that they would grant title insurance if the county would guarantee, effectively guarantee the property. This is something that we've done before. We've done it since I've been here. If you look at the purpose of the tax sale, to get properties productive and back on the tax rolls, then I, I think it would, you know, it would make sense that this be a decision that the board makes. In this particular instance, we have an individual who has a contract on the property, wants to build on the property, and so, you're looking at a, you know, he's claiming might be a couple hundred thousand dollar house. You get that back on the tax rolls, and that, you know, that's generating revenue. That's good for everyone, but it would require a guarantee on the county's part. I, I think the, the legal exposure here technically exists, but it's very, very minimal. I mean, in, in the mortgage company case, it would take a defunct mortgage company that we have searched thoroughly for. I mean, I, I just, I, I can't really fathom a scenario. They're not going to reorganize for purposes of, of trying to come back and get a, you know, a piece of land in Ottawa, Kansas. I mean, it's just, and so, my question is, how do you want me to handle this? Is this something that, are you comfortable with me drafting what is effectively a guarantee and sending it over to the title company for their review? And if so, you know, I'd probably ask the chair to execute that. Is that something, once I've drafted that and sent it, do you want me to bring it back in front of you as a agenda item? How would you want me to, or are you even willing to guarantee properties like this?
Yes.
There's no guaran, there's no guarantee that this guy will get the bid for the property.
Oh, he already did. Do what?
He already did.
He already bought the property.
Oh, he already bought the property.
So, so, when we do a tax sale, we always have disclaimers, and we have disclaimers for this very purpose. I mean, we tell interested buyers, look, these properties have went to tax sale. It's, it's possible that you will be unable to get title insurance due to various issues with service. And, and so, they know going in, so it's not so much feeling bad for the buyers as it is getting the properties back to being productive, you know, pieces of land. And so, and, and you guys have the ability to do that, I think, by granting these guarantees, so...
Generally speaking, blight before the tax sale were, they wouldn't have been, nobody would give away something of any value.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's exactly right. You look at the properties that go to tax sale, and they're, they are. They're blighted properties that just have been abandoned, and it's why the exposure's so low. A, there's not a lot of value there to begin with, and they've been abandoned. The owners don't, you know, we have another scenario where we can't serve the owner due to his location, but he has flat-out said, I want nothing to do with this property. And he's willing to give us a, you know, a release. I mean, he, so, in the instances that we have before us this time, I don't think the exposure's high. You know, as we move forward in additional years, I think looking at them on a case-by-case basis, there could be a time where I say, you know, I don't think that this is a good idea for us, and here's why. But in this instance, I, I don't see the exposure. I see a builder who wants to do something with two blighted pieces of land, and so...
Certainly, on the economic development things we do, we look at it and say, this little bit of effort's worth this potential gain.
Do you...
And we weigh that risk and reward on those, so it's kind of a similar...
Do you want a motion to move forward with that?
I, I don't know that I, I need a motion necessarily.
I would say, yeah. We, we want productive properties. We don't want that to come back, you know, and get sold again. It's not, that's not going to get anything accomplished, so...
I would be okay with you just drafting something and sending it over without coming back.
And you don't need to bring it back as a...
Okay. 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 Oh, I think that's, Don, do you?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Roy, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. I don't believe that I, I want David to give an update on the roads when we get over there, but I don't think I have anything else, so...
Larry?
I heard something this morning.
Brad, Dave and Bates?
Sheriff?
Commissioners, I just wanted to invite each of you to a event that'll be at the sheriff's office in the Sam Smith Training Center on Friday morning at 10:00. The sheriff's office has been awarded a traffic safety award through the state, it's through AAA from the state, and it's for various traffic safety programs that we're involved in and some enforcement campaigns that we do. And they're going to be presenting that award to us Friday morning at 10:00. And then, also, at the same time, several months back, we had some flooding, especially up around the Wellsville area, and we had staff out doing a lot of water rescues and things like that. One of the fire chiefs in the county observed what we were doing and was appreciative of that, but noted that we did not have the proper safety equipment really to be doing what we were doing. So, he wrote a grant through a, to a, through an organization called Hero Fund USA and kind of laid out the scenario. And they've awarded us a grant and will be presenting us with some safe, personal safety equipment to put in our vehicles. And that presentation will also be done Friday morning at 10:00. And so, I just wanted to invite each of you to be there. That's just a way for us to recognize the work that our staff has been doing. And it's, it's nice when people outside of the, you know, from outside of our county are recognizing the work that is being done. And we just wanted to be, give them the opportunity to, to, to do that, and we'd like to invite you to, to be there. So, other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
You could come in. It's also the same time as the first Friday forum.
It is. Yeah.
I did hear Yonkofo last Thursday, a lot of good information that she gave, and we'll have to get you out there more often.
Appreciated the opportunity. Don't want to commit to...
I love that idea. Actually, we both showed up that day, so...
Yeah, we did.
Robert Thomas tell us there? Is that, who, who, which person with the fire department?
The fire chief was James Savage is who, who wrote that.
Oh, okay. 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 And he has Potawatomi and Richmond now.
He has Potawatomi, and I believe Richmond.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank the sheriff.
And you're, the sheriff and I talked, he is in the process of getting bids on his detox cells, correct?
That's correct. We wanted to make sure that our bids that we receive are updated and had somebody look to make sure that everything that we're going to need for that, for that job, he gets included into that, into that bid. And because there'd been a delay, we had some before, but we wanted to make sure that everything is correct and that they are current. So, we're waiting, I believe we have the one from our local person already, but there, there's only one company that does the, that, basically the padding like that on the cells that does that. And so, we're waiting to get that back from them. We don't anticipate that there's going to be any, any... We don't anticipate that there's going to be any, any cha- any drastic changes, if there are changes at, at all from the previous thing. But that's, that's what we're waiting on. And when that happens, then, then I'll, uh, submit that to the administrators, uh.
Is there a dollar amount on that grant? Dollar amount on the grant? On the water rescue equipment?
I am, I'm not for sure, they'll, they'll tell us what that is. But they're actually providing us with the equipment.
Okay.
And, and so there will be no purchasing on our part or anything, so. Thank you.
Okay, listen, you had a program, uh, council, because of the weather, you want to tell us when you rescheduled that? Uh, your retreat, correct?
Yeah, our retreat's scheduled for March thirtieth. Yep. At the same time. We also have retro game night tonight at O-Town, um, from seven to nine, a fundraiser for Prairie Paws. Ten dollars gets an entry fee and you can come down and play some retro, um, board games that we have. And then Saturday is our spaghetti dinner at Sacred Heart from six to eight. Um, we only have about twenty tickets left, so if you're interested in coming, let me know and I'll get you tickets. But we're excited, um, Beethoven's is catering that this year. Um, and so we had two hundred and fifty tickets, so we're, we've pretty much sold out of those, so we're excited for that event this year.
Do you have a meeting tomorrow?
No, we do not. I'll send you a meeting schedule, thanks.
All right, thank you. David?
Okay, so we continue to battle our roads, uh, this week. Monday, uh, we had, looks like we had, uh, four groups of folks out patching holes, you know, on the hard surfaces uh, in addition to, uh, taking care of some of the gravel roads that we could get to. Uh, yesterday and today, it's all about taking care of frost boils. Uh, we don't, uh.
I'm sorry, take care of what?
Frost boils.
Okay.
Uh, that seems to be the, the, the phrase this year. Uh, we have many, many areas across the county that are, um, really in, in pretty poor shape. Um, the edges of, of most of the roads are, are not great. Um, where we're having the most significant issues are when the, the middle of the road, that where folks are driving right now, when that begins to fall apart, uh, that's, that's when folks are getting stuck and, and damaging vehicles and that sort of thing. Uh, so we are trying to patch those as best we can, as quickly as we can, uh, to make sure that it's at least, uh, passable. When the weather turns around and we get, uh, warmer temps and the, the frost is gone, gone from the soil, uh, we will begin repairing these, these locations, um, um, with more of a permanent fix. Uh, just last night, we had to close part of Ellis Terrace because, uh, crossroad tube, uh, we had a call. Um, you could see voids next to the tube, uh, made it dangerous for, for vehicles to pass. So we blocked, put, uh, barricades up on that last night. They're out this morning taking care of that, so folks be able to Travis, uh, travel Ellis Terrace, uh, here shortly. Hopefully this morning, they should have that back open. Uh, so we have those types of things all over the county that, uh, folks are working just as hard and fast as they can. Uh, all of our personnel are out, um, with the, uh, ice, uh, the little bit of ice that we had last night. We had, um, uh, folks monitoring the conditions starting about one thirty this morning. Uh, and we started treating some of those areas, uh, around four this morning. And so, uh, hopefully here this morning, we should have all of the, the, the spots, the trouble spots, uh, treated. So folks will be able to travel safely. It has been a long, grueling winter and, and it's not over yet.
Do you have a line of frost boil for everybody? I get a lot of questions about that.
Yeah, uh, frost boil, and, and, and quite frankly, if, if any of you read the Ottawa Herald, um, I think it was Monday or Tuesday this week, uh, Jeff Welton, our road superintendent, did a, a great job of describing, uh, those instances. Uh, what happens is, with all the rain and moisture that we've had this winter and all the springs and things that we have near and under our roads throughout the county, that moisture has, uh, frozen and, and then it thaws. And then it freezes and heaves up and then it thaws. And essentially what happens is, that road just falls apart. Uh, that material, uh, the, the, the rock and the, the soil and, and whatnot that makes up that road falls to nothing. And so the only way to fix it is to completely remove it. So we're, we're taking that material, we're setting it aside, and we're having to haul in rock to firm these areas up, um, uh, just to get them passable. Once, as I mentioned, once the temperatures turn around, we will go in and rebuild these areas, the, the worst of the areas. Some of the areas will heal themselves. We're seeing these, uh, these issues in areas around the county that they've never had these problems before. And so it, it, you know, I hate to keep saying this, but it, it's a unusual winter. Um, uh, the surrounding counties are having just as many issues as we are, if, if not more. Uh, but we are doing our best to, to tackle these things. So we would ask the, the public, when they see them, to let us know so that we can, we can track them and we can get them addressed as quickly as possible.
Do you have a hotline number, David?
We do not have a hotline number, but, uh, we can, we can be reached at the Public Works, uh, office here at the Annex. What is that number? It's, uh, two, two, nine, thirty-five, fifty, I believe. I think. Still learning, uh, some of these things.
I was on Rock Creek the Friday night, Friday night, I guess. And I was like, I didn't call you because I know you've heard it, I'm sure you've heard it. But you know, it, and I think people just have to understand, you know, it is, it is, has been unusual and you're just going to have to slow down.
Yes.
Especially on some of these dirt roads, you know, when you, you know where the pot will, you just got to slow down and the county will get to them.
We, we would just encourage folks to, to drive to the conditions of the road, uh, avoid problem areas that, that you're aware of. And, and please do notify us, uh, you know, we have limited staff and we have, you know, over eleven hundred miles of county roads to, to monitor. So we are, we're out there, we're doing our best, best to track these things. But, you know, uh, the more folks we have keeping an eye on things, the better off we'll be. So please, please do contact us.
Two, nine, thirty-five, fifty.
Thank you.
What's your, what's the salt situation, Dave?
The what?
Salt.
We are down, um, I believe Jeff said we have about eleven hundred tons left, so we should be fine. Uh, that's about two-thirds of, of our capacity. Uh, and through that, we've, we've, uh, uh, sold salt to some of the surrounding communities, the city of Ottawa, some others, um, and, but we're fine. As long as we don't have, you know, three or four or five more. Yes. Uh, we, we feel like we're okay. And so we'll, we'll be replenishing that this summer, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Chet? Hey, takes us to Commissioner's comments and board reports. Roy, you want to start? I just went to Friday morning coffee last Friday to Angel Care down on Main Street. Uh, they provide the service for, uh, seniors, trying to keep them in their homes as long as possible. It was the third year anniversary for this, uh, company.
I, uh, went to the City of Ottawa regular commission meeting last Wednesday and I don't know, it, you, it's hard to believe they're ever going to need it, but they passed an updated water conservation. Now it seems like we're never going to get rid of all this water, but, um, and they're still dealing with the whole, uh, trying to, to come to a solution with the Legacy Square with, um, the, the businesses there, um, and the construction of that Legacy Square. And then we had the meeting with the, uh, city commission and the school board last Wednesday also.
Uh, wasn't that the hospital meeting? Because I was at our, uh, board retreat, but I did get an update that, uh, last month volumes were down, attributed largely to the flu shot worked well this year. But expenses followed revenue in this instance, so, uh, it wasn't a horrible month. Uh, affiliation with Adventist Health is still on.
Uh, I did go to Soil Conservation District meeting the other day, not as a county representative. They are part of the RCND. So I went to their meeting and kind of got, hadn't been one in a long time, got a good update on where they're heading. Everybody knows me and I know them now, everybody's on the board. And we discussed, they discussed to me all the projects that they're working on, uh, right now, so I'll leave that at there. Uh, I am working with the, uh, through the RCND with Project Seventeen right now. We're looking into a, uh, organization inside of Nebraska, I heard about it, I was contacted. Uh, they specialize in, uh, small town grocery stores. It's one of the things they, they specialize, they wrote a big article and, and a big document on it. And I contacted Heather Morgan with Project Seventeen, we discussed it, talked it, we're going to get with them. I'd say, I'd be something interested to bring their group down in our area. And, and it's not only for putting new ones, it's also making the small ones that are still there, what to do to improve their self and, and better places they can look for, uh, I suppose, uh, USDA funding and, and so forth, you know. But, uh, you know yourself, all of you know, every little town had a grocery store at one time and it sounds, and they all did good when they were there. So hopefully I can get this company in, I read about them and it sounds like they're, uh, they're kind of like the rural center here in Kansas, only, uh, they're the rural center in Nebraska. And they've agreed to talk to us, so we're going to do some talking with people. Another thing, uh, uh, I'm having Roy kind of a little about this one too, uh, uh, getting involved with, uh, uh, Union Farmers Association here in Kansas. I've talked to them and they're, they're in the Veteran Farmers Coalition. And, uh, that's, uh, finding, uh, an organization that works with the veteran farmers to help them get started or do better or whatever, uh, for veterans. And I've talked to the Soil Conservation about that and I've talked to Project Seventeen about helping with that, so. That's something we're moving forward with. And then last night, I had a small group of people, whatnot as a commissioner, as an individual on another nonprofit. But we met with a young professional through the chamber down there, they're about a twenty-person group right now. And we discussed with them about some things that they could do to help, uh, one or two of the nonprofits here, the help that they need and, and things that they could provide, being young people and with the real techni- technology background that they have that maybe basically one of our groups that, I'm one of the young guys on the group, so that, there's very many young people in the group, so. But they are really, uh, excited and about, I know they already helped the, with the tractor show and it provided help with them, technical work and different things, so. I think they're a good little, they're a good group of people and, and, uh, I think they'll be good, maybe we, we can use them on other things.
Okay, uh, yesterday I went to the Franklin County Tourism Board Meeting. Um, Steve and Bradley from the Ottawa Herald, which is a media consultant there, uh, was the speaker. He talked to us about some of the media opportunities that the Herald has and some options and how we could, uh, use those for the tourism. Susan talked about the TGT co-sponsorship program and they formed a group to look into that and try to revamp the application process. Lee and Susan both gave updates on the marketing workshops they've been attending. And, and Susan gave a marketing report at the end of the meeting. And that's the only thing I've been to since our last meeting. David, you got something else you wanted to add?
I just wanted to update you briefly on Proximity Park. Uh, I met with the contractors last week. They're fighting the weather just like everybody else, so they're a month to a month and a half behind schedule. Uh, they're out there, uh, working as we speak. Uh, they're hoping to pour the bridge deck at the end of this week or first of next week. Uh, and they need two to three weeks of good, clear weather uh, before they can start prepping to pour concrete on the remaining portions, the sidewalk and those sorts of things. So instead of being completed by April first, it looks like it's going to be first of May to middle of May. What that means is, uh, instead of there being a slight gap between when one project finishes and the next one, the intersection project starts, there probably won't be much of a gap. Uh, things will just continue, will just flow right into the intersection project once the road project is complete. I don't think it will be a significant, um, problem as far as being able, controlling traffic and those sorts of things. But we're not going to have any kind of, of gap between the two projects. The city, uh, has approval, uh, through their city commission for their sanitary sewer project. But I spoke with the city this morning, they're waiting, uh, from, from word from, I, I believe it's the, the feds, that the money is available. Uh, once they get final word that they can move forward, they will be able to immediately advertise and bid. So there will, I suspect that, uh, kind of in the same timeframe that the intersection project is going on, there will be, uh, contractors working on the installation of the sewer. And again, that won't negatively impact anything, uh, uh, you know, both projects are somewhat independent of each other, be working in similar areas, but it, I don't think it'll have a negative impact, uh, on the area.
The, uh, I think they're working with USDA for that.
Yes, ma'am.
And so the government shutdown was not, um, helpful.
Yep. Yes. That, that's all that I had.
Okay, we need to enter into an executive session to discuss a pending legal matter pursuant to the COME exception lying for consultation with the county counselor, which is deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. They need to go in for twenty minutes, be the administrator slash counselor and the commission. Anyone else? Okay, we'll start that at nine-twenty.
Do you have a, have to motion to go into, I would move that we move into executive session?
Would that be for?
For twenty minutes? Do I need?
Yeah, I, I would, when you make your motion, just to read what I've got.
Go on, sorry, didn't read that. I move that we move into an executive session to discuss a pending legal matter pursuant to the COME exception allowing for consultation with the county counselor, which is deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship.
Twenty minutes.
For twenty minutes.
I would second that.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Raymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Hey, we're out of executive session at nine forty, no action taken. If there's not anything else, I would look for a, a motion to adjourn. Have a motion as your second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We're adjourned.